I see on my trustee watch here that it's seven o'clock, so in the interest of our East Lansing community, I will call us to order at 7:00 PM. Ms. Holcourt, would you help us with a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Chambers.
Present.
Dr. Lyons. Ms. Ferris-Hyland.
Here.
Dr. Edsel.
Here.
Ms. Fink. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Holbrook.
Here.
Our student representatives are not here this evening. Ms. Laiko.
Here.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Trustee Martin, would you please read our mission statement?
The mission of East Lansing Public Schools is nurturing each child, educating all students, building world citizens.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the oath of office for Gary Holbrook. And I think I will turn this over to Ms. Holcourt again.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of the School District of the City of East Lansing.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of the School District of the City of East Lansing.
In Clinton Counties, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
In Clinton Counties, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. I think that deserves some applause.
Welcome.
Are there any board members who want to, I don't know that we typically make comments about this, but...
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Glad to be here.
We are glad to have you, and thank you for your commitment and your willingness to serve in this office. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would any board member be interested in making a motion related to this item?
I move the Board of Education approves the agenda of the August 28th, 2023 regular meeting as presented.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Ferris-Hyland, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion? Then moving forward to a vote, all in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the following meetings, August 14th, 2023, regular meeting, August 18th, 2023, special meeting.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Ferris-Hyland. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Then that motion also passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognition. Trustee Ferris-Hyland, do we have any recognition tonight?
I have none tonight, but I'm sure that will change hopefully next meeting.
Yeah. Are there any other board members or superintendent Laiko have any items for recognition?
I have a couple of things to share that I shared at opening day last week in terms of recognition in the district that I'd just like to share with all of you and publicly. I wanted to comment on our facilities and grounds crew and the work they've done to get ready for school. This is led by Tabo Arceo and his crew, but they always, especially, I mean, they were out there spreading mulch and doing all kinds of grounds work last week and really made our facilities and grounds look wonderful for the start of the school year. You know, a lot of things shut down in the summer, but our technology department actually like kind of ramps up because that's when they get all their devices back and have a lot of work to do. So I just want to acknowledge, recognize our technology department led by Christian Palasty and a special mention to Kaylee Stevens for her work on the district Facebook page. So if you've, if you've paid attention prior to this year compared to maybe the last six, eight months of our Facebook page, Kaylee Stevens has put a lot of time and effort into really making it community friendly, a lot of input and a lot of things she's receiving and putting back out there. So just want to acknowledge her work on that. I had lots of comments. Usually this time of year is when folks come in and the past couple of years, not all of our rooms and buildings have looked as sharp as they could. And this year I got emails and comments on just the opposite, that they are custodial and maintenance staff led by Billy Hastings and Vince Watson had our buildings and classrooms looking as well as they've ever looked before, especially in our new buildings, but also in the middle school and high school. I got lots of comments and lots of pictures of both. And I did also want to acknowledge the folks who spent our summer school time with our kiddos. So we had a great, a great group of elementary student summer staff or summer school people who included teachers, paras, secretaries, all kinds of support for the summer school program at elementary, along with middle school 101, high school 101, and then the high school credit recovery for E2020 that we use. We had lots of folks who are extending their school year to support our students. And then finally, the last recognition I shared at last week's opening day was Michigan Lottery's Excellence in Education Educator of the Year, Catherine Cluzak at Green Elementary School, which we have, I know, recognized at the board meeting before, but hadn't done it in front of the staff. So we also acknowledge and recognize Catherine. So those are just some of the post-summer back-to-school recognition folks that were shared last week at opening day.
Wonderful. Are there questions or comments for the superintendent about the super, about recognition? Never mind, there's not questions about recognition. But I did want to just say, sorry, I got confused there for a second. On the subject of how wonderful the buildings look, even my 12-year-old son walked into McDonald's last week and commented on the floors, which I know was a huge undertaking of stripping all of the wax and making them look really fantastic. So I think that's a pretty stellar example of how great they look when a tween notices the floors in the building. Oh, I know, they were, they're looking, they're looking good.
I would, I would also say that the, the best thing about Facebook is our district's Facebook page.
Agreed.
It is. There's, sometimes there's not a whole lot to like on there, but our district's Facebook has been really good and I really enjoyed it, really, like you said, eight or nine months. It's been really positive to see the great things that are happening.
We made that change. I mean, it kind of was sparked by some of just the communication changes that we made and trying to make information more accessible to folks and also to make that page representative of our district and our community. So yeah, it's been great.
Great. Okay, next on the agenda is student representative report. As Ms. Holcourt mentioned, we don't have those students ready quite yet, but I selfishly am looking forward to their contributions to our meeting, so that should be taking place soon. And next on the agenda, superintendent's report. Superintendent Laiko, I'll turn the floor to you.
Thank you. So first, we had a nice, short week, but great first week of school. So that was last week, we started professional learning for staff on Monday and Tuesday. Monday's morning, whole district session included a presentation of district goals and recognition of staff who completed 10, 15, 20, 25, we didn't actually do fives, I missed that one, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service to ELPS. We didn't, we kind of go by five, so we had one person on the 30 list this year, and that was as much as we had this year. Elementary schools held their back-to-school night last Monday evening. Curriculum night is September 6th at East Lansing High School and September 7th at McDonald Middle School. Just reminder, there's no school this Friday and Monday in observance of Labor Day. Next Friday, September 8th, the East Lansing Educational Foundation, ELEF, will be holding its annual tailgate before the varsity football game against Okemos. The tailgate will be held on the west side of the stadium from 5:15 to 6:45 or until food is gone. Cost is $5, which includes a hamburger, veggie burger, or hot dog, potato salad, watermelon, chips, cookie, and a drink, and new kindergarten students will receive a free hot dog meal. I've also, again, listed the five professional learning days for staff, which means no school for students, so families can get those on their calendar. This document will be sent out tomorrow morning. And finally, secondary safety, security, and accessibility bond proposal under consideration. So based on an assessment of middle and high school safety, security, and accessibility needs, along with stakeholder feedback from last winter, district leaders are considering a bond proposal to improve these aspects at our secondary buildings. We are aiming for a May 2024 election and will be convening a bond advisory committee soon. We are still in very early stages of this work, and so much more information will be forthcoming and regularly shared. I just held an initial meeting today with a few of the directors to determine what our first couple of steps are. Even though I've gone through the whole bond process, I jumped in a little late last time, so we're going to be convening a meeting with Trune first to help with our timeline and to be able to bring that back to the board and community.
Great. Now, are there questions for the superintendent regarding the superintendent report? I have a couple of clarifications. My goodness, those clarifications and questions kind of went together in one strange new word.
Clarifications.
Yeah. Clarify questions, I think is what I was trying to say. Okay, so for the location of the tailgate, if I'm remembering correctly, between the pandemic and then the remodeling of the tennis courts, where this is, we're moving back to the original location of where the tailgate has been held by the football stadium?
Yeah, last year they moved it up here because we had a tent out here, too. So they were using kind of the tent, and so we don't have that right now, so they're, they're moving back out where, where the traffic to the game really is, too.
Yeah. That's great.
Yes.
And I love that the kindergartners are going to get a free hot dog meal. Get them early. Get them, you know, acclimated to the football culture. That sounds cool. Okay, those are the only things I wanted to make a comment about.
Yep.
Okay, then we will move on to public comment. There are blue forms in a bin in the back. If you are interested in making public comment, please fill that form out. See a couple come in my way. And I will read this statement. This is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes after all other persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker will be allowed additional time. The superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings. Okay, so the first I have is Amanda Schneider and Renee Van Remmen speaking about back-to-school. Awesome, please, yeah, come on up to the podium. Good to see you guys.
So I'm Amanda Schneider, and this is Renee Van Remmen. We represent elementary for the ELEA, and so we just wanted to give a couple of comments. One, a broad statement, thank you from elementary and beyond for switching the janitors to in-house. We really super-duper appreciate it. I know you already commented on it, but the building's just like amazing, and it has been a daily effort, so we just really appreciate it.
Which eases a lot of our stress coming in on a daily basis, so it is really truly appreciated. The other thing that you also mentioned, Dory, was the open house for elementary. It was quite a bit of work for teachers to get in to be ready to go on our very first day back, but it was great to welcome families back and have the opportunity to ease a lot of the nerves of students and adults and just really see the excitement and a great way to kick off the school year. So we're excited about great possibilities coming our way and think it's going to be a great year. We just wanted to let you know that we are the elementary reps.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And also never want to miss the opportunity to say thank you, too, in that transition period for all of the help that teachers and other staff offered in the cleaning of the buildings. You guys really helped, and I appreciate it. Next is Dr. Byber speaking about climate and curriculum. Please come on forward.
I mean, I don't know if we need a microphone, but there it is.
For the people at home.
All right. Ani, Nicole, Nidhesh, Nikaz, Morgan, Akis, Noda, Nishna, Vekwe, Mshiki, Dodem. I'm going to come in a little hot, so I, at some point last year, I had heard that there was a staff person at Red Cedar who wanted to start a garden and was also kind of denied, and I just sort of wrote my thoughts about that. But from my experience, there's a massive roadblock when it comes to actions, no matter what words are used to signal an alleged commitment to inclusion. I can assume that I won't experience derogatory language about my heritage or a direct statement that my perspective does not matter, but that's of no comfort when I can pretty much assume that what I have to say is ultimately guaranteed to be considered outside the realm of practical decision-making. Saying, "Listen to BIPOC voices" does not tend to extend a validation of what's being said if that means action will change to the status quo. So it's clear that my indigenous and Nishna background necessitates the years-long efforts I've made to at least start a conversation about reducing plastic waste, planting more thoughtful, pollinator-friendly habitat, both of which would provide real-world education opportunities that just might enliven our public schools enough to ensure continued enrollment. And yet, the lawnmowers continue, requests to start gardens are denied, and the packaged and processed breakfast foods are handed out to the children in a big Ziploc bag, all going into the trash morning after morning. So when it comes to day-to-day on-the-ground experience, the entrenched dismissal of marginalized voices is painfully obvious. Paper bags, local foods, butterflies, and a livable future for our children are apparently too big of an ask because it challenges the power norm. So that were, those were my honest thoughts, and you know, it's good to speak honestly. Since 2020, I've heard many times, "Listen to these voices. We want you to say something." So I've started saying things, and it's very frustrating when it doesn't seem to result in changes, but we keep going. So I recently had the pleasure of attending an EPA-led public input session for the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. If you need to pick me up, check out those projects. They're, they're amazing. So one of the ways they did this is you could put questions in and they asked people to upvote things that they liked, so they could pay more attention to those kind of issues as well. So here's something that got a lot of good feedback. I wrote, "The majority of children in our public schools could arguably be considered underserved when it comes to climate-based curriculum and any consideration, let alone implementation of on-the-ground restoration projects. Were the programs and initiatives to move the overall Michigan public education system away from standardized testing and technology focus to instead empower children to learn the practicalities of stewardship, that would certainly be transformative." So it breaks my heart with the beautiful children I've had the pleasure to be around and, you know, the great staff at R.L. Green, but I am leaving the district as an employee. And, you know, it's with, it's to help with environmental efforts, so, you know, it feels right for me to do that, but I'm still a taxpayer and I'm still an engaged citizen. And I want you to know, I've been repeatedly thanked for raising these issues and these concerns. And one of the reasons it's so important, so I'll just briefly say in this Mother Jones, it just says, "What many of us think is possible is nothing. While we dread the impacts of global warming, we often cope by ignoring the issue. According to a 2022 report from Yale's Program on Climate Change Communication, two-thirds of Americans rarely or never discuss climate change with friends and family, and less than a quarter say they hear people they know talking about climate change at least once a month. We can't fix a problem we don't talk about." So I would encourage everyone in this community to insist on these conversations because then that gets us to the point where we're talking about the possibilities. And the why is incredibly consequential. Book recommendation, because I was working in the library, if you haven't read Braiding Sweetgrass by Robin Kimmer, it's, I think, something that's very important for everyone to be aware of. And she says here, "We do indeed stand at the crossroads. Scientific evidence tells us we are close to the tipping point of climate change, the end of fossil fuels, the beginning of resource depletion. Ecologists estimate that we would need seven planets to sustain the lifeways we have created, and yet those lifeways lacking balance, justice, and peace have not brought us contentment. They have brought us the loss of our relatives and a great wave of extinction. Whether or not we want to admit it, we have a choice ahead, a crossroads." And she says, "I worry who will get to the crossroads first, who will make the choices for us all. I don't want to keep worrying. It's our responsibility to allow our children a way where it's restoration, because that's in our hands. We're the only ones whose hands it's in." Yegwach.
Thank you, Dr. Byber. We hope we'll still see you around at these meetings. Excellent.
May I, may I recognize something from Dr. Byber that I didn't recognize in recognition today? Obviously, Dr. Byber's been doing a lot of important work in our district for a long time, and I hope she continues to do so. But I was actually at a museum in Traverse City with my children over the summer, and I saw an exhibit in which Dr. Byber was featured, and she was celebrating her indigenous heritage. And I pointed out to my kids that you were an employee of the district, and they thought it was the coolest thing ever. So.
Next, we have Rosalie McGill. Yeah, if you want to come, yeah, right up there.
You pull the microphone down towards you? There you go. You got it.
Awesome. Perfect. Yeah, it'll pick it up. Yep.
Or you could just set it, the whole thing down on the floor.
I think it'll work. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I am Rosalie McGill in fifth grade from Green Elementary. I think my school should have a recycling bin and a compost bin in the cafeteria. I would like a recycling bin because when people are done with their lunch, they just dump everything into the trash. The more trash that piles up in the trashpiles has effect on a lot of things. One, it doesn't smell very good. Two, it takes up a lot of space. And three, it's taking away the habitats for animals. I would like a compost bin because the more we compost, the more we can help keep the earth clean. Another reason I would like a compost bin is that if we turn it into soil, we can put it in our school garden so the things in it can grow better. I have 122 names of people at Green Elementary who would like a recycling bin and a compost bin in our cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. I think it's pretty awesome that you took the courage to come and talk to us at the school board tonight, and it's a really important issue that you're talking about. Thank you so much. Next is Brad Lutz talking about communication.
Good evening, I'm Brad Lutz, parent of three children here in the district, and I would like to say that communication has gotten more consistent, and I appreciate that. I do still think the district needs to highly weigh hiring a communications director as we're still getting multiple emails that are incorrect, and sorting through that is a lot when you have three separate students in the district. You know, getting an all email for sixth-grade band fitting, I don't have any sixth graders. Getting emails that don't have the links to the newsletters and that are just blank. So then you have to wait for another one, and then you have to, is that one correct? And checking it. And so we need to come up with a communications policy, and we really need a director to do that and oversee it efficiently. The second piece of communication I would like to discuss is the lack of communication from anyone in the district regarding how they are going to protect the students at McDonald Middle School this year from racist treatment by the adults. There was an investigation conducted. I don't care what happened with the employee, I would like to know what steps we're taking so that my children do not experience that again. I have not heard from anyone in the district outside of a letter from Amy Martin at the end of the year last year stating an investigation was going to take place. This is unacceptable. We harmed our children last year. As a parent, I deserve to know what steps are being taken to protect them going forward because that employee is still in the district. And again, whatever happened, happened. I understand the legalities of employment, but as a parent who was impacted by that, I have a right to know how my children are going to be protected, and nobody has made any statements on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Next, we have Angelo Moreno from the East Lansing Public Library. Please step forward.
Hey, everybody, good evening.
Good evening.
Just thought I would take this opportunity to introduce myself. I've, I met several of you in other occasions, but I wanted to introduce myself and say that I've recently become interim director of the East Lansing Public Library. The position is intended to last a few months, about six months, and so I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, hey, I'm here, I'm right over there. In fact, this is the first time in the four years that I've been working that I walked over here, and man, it's really close. So please do come visit me, talk to me, let's establish a dialogue, let's figure out how we can work together to provide excellent service to the kids in this community. I have an open door. And also, I wanted to say that we are, the board of library trustees is hard at work right now on the process for selecting a permanent director. So I want to encourage everybody in the audience, everybody on the board, everybody listening to reach out directly to the board if they have any interest in being involved in that process, or if you want to reach out to me, and I can reach out to the board for you. Either way, that process is underway, and we want to make sure it's done in a good way. And also, I wanted to say that we are hiring, so if there are folks in your life, we have a lot of part-time positions, so if there are folks in your life where that would be appropriate for them, please do send them our way. We pay pretty great, and it's an awesome place to work, so. And we also just did a full-time position today, so check that out for any degree librarians out there, and we will have another full-time librarian position coming up in the next few days. So please spread the word, and if you have any questions, reach out to me. Thanks.
Actually, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Last year, or early this year, the after-school program, it seemed to have changed, improved, enhanced, something. Are we continuing that forward into the new school year for our kids that come over there? There's activities, things to do after school?
Yeah, there are activities, there are programs, we have staff, but actually, one of those full-time positions that we're posting later this week is directly related to teen services, so please do keep an eye on that. We're hoping to beef that up, for sure. So, but yes, the answer is yes, there is still opportunities there, and we're still hard at work providing a good space for folks to come after school.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, just, Mr. Morales and I were over there a couple of days ago at the library after school. We had many kids coming in, utilizing their programming still, and a member of their board has reached out to us to ask for our participation on the director position, so Mr. Mitchum is going to be sitting on that committee.
Makes sense. I see the connection.
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, I have my last blue form, so this will be my final call. If you're interested in making public comment, please get your blue form into Ms. Holcourt. Mike Feldpoch speaking about Justice Leaders Collaborative.
This kind of goes along the lines of what I was speaking about two weeks ago during my interview and transparency. And Tara seemed to be open to the idea of, you know, talking more about Justice Leaders Collaborative, so that's what I'm going to do. I'm not giving an opinion as to my feelings, but I want more and more people to know about the organization and the training that staff from this district receive from this, from Justice Leaders Collaborative. First of all, it is a social justice education training and coaching for individuals, organizations, schools, and universities. Justice Leaders Collaborative believes it is our human responsibility to work towards social justice, the dismantling of systems of privilege and oppression in all areas of life. Our peacock leather, feather in our logo represents the awakening of a social justice consciousness, which is the first step of transformation in the creation of a more just society. Our goal is to do our part to contribute to a world free from injustice and committed to collective liberation. And going forward, I received about two years ago from Glenn, a chart, a privilege chart, systems of oppression, and if anybody wants to see this, they can see me afterwards or find me on Facebook. It breaks people down according to color, gender, sexual preference, wealth, ability or not, or... or disability, and faith, age, and size, and breaks them down and puts them on a chart of oppression. And I just wanted to let people know that this has Justice Leaders Collaborative symbols, so it came from the organization and is apparently a framework of what is being taught to staff in East Lansing. All the teach, not all the teachers, I'm sorry. Staff here have taken a core course called the Introduction to Social Justice for Educators. It's an intensive seminar designed for school personnel to seek to deepen their understanding of and commitment to equity, inclusion, diversity, and social justice along lines of race, class, gender, sexual orientation, and ability. Participants must be willing to reflect deeply in ways that challenge previously-held assumptions and worldviews. There's also a course called the Advanced Course for Educators, deepening awareness. And it's about continuing to learn and grow professionally, personally and professionally when it comes to issues of diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice. Participants will continue deepening their personal learning about racism, sexism, classism, and will come to a better understanding of systems of oppression by learning how sizism, adultism, and Christian dominance manifest in schools. And there's more of that, but I think I might run out of time shortly. And then also there's a training session on, that's called Critical Race Theory. What is it? Why does it matter? What is actual critical race theory? What are the goals of the anti-critical race theory movement? How should justice-minded educators and school leaders respond to the pushback they are experiencing? The short workshop provides foundational understanding of the CRT backlash for educators to help them make sense of the current moment as they pursue equity, diversity, inclusion, and social justice in their schools. There is a systems course for educators that talks about what it would be like to change the system, to transform the system, and who is advocating for such change. This course supports educators concerned about the big picture of education justice in America. And there's also a course called Introduction to Social Justice for School Boards. What does it mean to create schools that foster diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice so that all students are safe and successful? In this 90-minute introductory session, we'll consider the purpose of education, learn about the many dimensions of diversity. Just want to say that also a course or a seminar on socially just holidays and heritage months, and there's more, and I'll continue talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feldpoch. Ms. Holcor, did we receive any more forms? No, okay, I didn't think I saw anybody move. That will conclude public comment. Next on the agenda is board discussion. I didn't receive any topics for board discussion. Well, are there any board members who are interested in having a conversation tonight?
I did want to ask, I know that when my son was at Marble, there were recycling bins outside. Do you know?
I'd have to do some inventorying to check to be able, I don't know offhand.
Do you know if there's a recycling bin outside your building? Ms. Van Remen is shaking her head, yes. Okay.
We have recycling bins in the classrooms, but not in the lunchroom.
Okay, okay, because I know that they had the really big ones up outside Marble and just nothing at RL Green.
I've been in the cafeteria and it's a whole lot of trash. It's plastic wrapped food inside of plastics at blood bags and then children just dump it all into the trash every single day with a lot of food that's uneaten.
Yeah, the plastic itself, you know, that may or may not even be recyclable anyway. So, okay, you got my curiosity peaked, I'm going to dig deeper.
Along the same lines, I think that at one point the city was talking about a composting program and I don't know if that went anywhere, if it's going anywhere, but that might be something we can, if it happened, it's something we can certainly latch on to.
Mm-hmm, and there are, I mean, there are districts that have programs. So, I mean, we have had this, it's a topic that comes up.
Yeah, actually, there was a teacher at Robert L. Green back when it was Pinecrest, Mr. Canat, who I think is over at Red Cedar now, who talked a long time ago about, because I had a kid there a long time ago, about composting and for some reason that never got off the ground. Have you talked to Ms. Martin at your school about, I'm sorry, Ms. Webster? They're both Amys, sorry, about a compost place in the school grounds, like where you could do it? Okay. Okay.
There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of people with a lot of knowledge. Go to MSU, give even more people with more knowledge. It's doable, but it needs to be considered a priority.
I'm going to pull us back, we're a little bit out of order having back and forth conversation. Rosalie, I'm going to follow up with you and send an email probably through your teacher to see if I can learn some more about what you're interested in doing. So expect to hear from me through that means. Is there any other other comments? Then we'll move to committee reports. Academic and Tech, that's Liz, she is not here. We have, Academic and Tech is meeting Wednesday, Wednesday noon here in the boardroom. Yes. And we have that as sort of an organizational meeting for the year, if I'm remembering my details correctly. Next, Facilities.
We had a meeting on, last Friday? Yeah. And I'm happy to report that Billy, our facilities head, is going to be plotting out the best places at each elementary school for community gardens and said he'd have this information by the next meeting. So that's really promising. We also talked a lot about everything Ms. Lakeau mentioned with all the awesome updates that happened over the summer, but some that we didn't touch on were installed handicapped access areas at each elementary schools to the path from the asphalt to the swing set. They added an asphalt pad at White Hills. They added fencing around retention ponds last weekend. They've reworked woodchips at all playgrounds, spread over 1,000 yards to make them safer. And at Marble, they moved a gate to the playground per Mr. Robertson's request to make the playground more secure. So those are some more updates. Track and tennis court hours worked really well this summer. They still had people jumping the fence, but crew has locked the gates when hours were off. There are some small modifications or improvements being made to the tennis courts where there were some imperfections or there's a bit out to make that happen. Let's see. We touched on the summer deep cleaning, the pool roof was completed. Now they're moving on to the pool boiler. They're getting three bids on this. And then we talked about the pending or potential bond proposal, which Ms. Lakeau also mentioned, and that was our facilities meeting. So we have to set our next and so let's set them through the year, but we'll do that because we haven't set Septembers yet. But we'll do that next and move forward there and that's Facilities.
Great, thank you so much. Next is Finance, I think that's trustee Edso.
Yes, we'll meet, I forgot my phone, so you know when we meet.
September 29?
September 29. All right, I know, Rich isn't here, I don't have my phone.
Hang on, I got it.
27th.
Well, Superintendent Lakeau's looking that up. We'll move to Intergovernmental, trustee Fink is not here. Is any other member of the, I don't think that they have met.
Have not met. Finance Committee is the 27th at 12:30. You're welcome. I know they haven't, Intergovernmental hasn't met.
Okay, next is Personnel, we have also not met. And finally, Policy, that is trustee Edso again.
So I took everybody's information for the next meeting and looks like the time that works is September 13th at, scheduled at 10:00, 10 a.m.
Fabulous. Okay, are there any announcements by board members or the superintendent this evening?
I am thrilled to see these little baby children back in school. It makes me so happy to see all the kids walking, all the buses.
I'm thrilled to see my little baby children back in school.
Like I was telling somebody today, I'm happy that these teachers have their children back. I mean, I've had him all summer. But it really is just fantastic. It's so exciting, this is the exciting part of the year. Even my kid is excited to go to school every day. That will wane, I know, but for right now, he gets up with no trouble. Okay. I don't see anyone else with any announcements, so I'll call us adjourned at 7:41 p.m.
Thank you.
Pretty good. Thanks, y'all.